In accordance with your will, we give you thanks for their wisdom, guidance, and dedication to serving the people. Lord, that you will continue to give them understanding as they make decisions for every community. Lord, we specifically lift up our new fire chief and the district chief. We express our heartfelt gratitude for their brave service and selflessness in protecting and ensuring the safety of our community. Good passage grant them strength, wisdom, discernment as they carry out their duties. Bless them abundantly and keep them safe both in their professions and in their personal lives. Lord, we thank you for the active, engaged citizens that are essential for a thriving city. May we show gratitude, thankfulness, and support for our leaders and their decision-making. Together, we can build a stronger and more resilient community. As we gather today during this Thanksgiving week, we also remember and pray for the families of our leaders and the decision-makers. May...
Here. Thank you for everyone. It's good to see everyone here about November 1st meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask that anyone have any type of defect on their device or sell commerce. Please at this time fill the hall in appropriate position. The hall in appropriate position. And a person that is desired to address the council must sign the education presidency. The hardest, lovely hearing tonight before you. The resident council speaker was a good leader of her name. And a person that is trying to speak to the council, not a different way. Was not expected to serve all personal events, but given the purpose of the council meeting. The subject they use to wish to address the council, would be identified in the name of the city mobile business. And a person who has not given proper notice of the city work office and wishes to sit in the resident council. Would not be allowed to address the council. Speaking of our three ministers of the council, that they'll decide the education. Who end this conference, we may summarize it. Second, that this conference is private. The resident council, the first member of the council, council members of all states of the nation, chair of the resident council, council members of which are in this conference. May they be more than ever in charge of the hall and all of the other members. About the work of the... So, probably the second discussion. Our favorite, our foes, that's a good... Yeah, this is too easy. Good morning. Good morning to see everyone here this morning. Thank you for coming this Thanksgiving week. Give them sayin' how thankful I am for all of my city employees. For what they do every day trying to improve the quality of life in the city. Also thanking the city council for their dedication and trying to improve the mobility to the right direction. We succeed in everything that we do. And I'm thankful for all the citizens of the city mobile. To give me an opportunity to live now and serve as your neighbor. Lastly, I'm thankful, maybe I should say firstly, I'm thankful to God and His love, personally, grace, and forgiveness. Um, I hope that this Thanksgiving holiday, we share your love, your forgiveness, your mercy, your grace, and comfort. Having said that, um, I wish all of y'all a blessed Thanksgiving. We have a couple of now, we have one proclamation read, and then we have some employees of the... But the proclamation is the National Home Care Hospice Proclamation. And I think we have those, maybe Ashley Armstrong, or many, many more. Michael Moore, Daniel Thompson, maybe Richard Swanson, some of these here. Really, don't be focused on that here, please. And the proclamation reads, uh, "Whereas health, healthcare services are not high-quality, compassionate healthcare services for five billion Americans annually, especially in times of community or personal healthcare crisis. And whereas ninety percent of Americans want their age and place, health care is the preferred method of healthcare delivery among the disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals, who are equally, uh, living independently in their own homes as long as they possibly can. And whereas two million everyday heroes, including home care nurses, parents, and aides, will travel almost a billion miles, who are prepared and more tirelessly, provide professional support. Millions of Americans who need quality healthcare services. Whereas the Birmingham Home Care and National Association of Home Care Hospices, thousands of home care agencies across the U.S., calling on all Americans to observe these occasions with appropriate ceremonies and activities, now therefore, I mean, this is a modern day prayer. The City Mobile will hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-three as National Home Care Hospice Month in the City of...
Um, I just wanna say it's an honor to be here and to have them help recognize we have such a great, um, staff. We really love to...
...teaching instructions, information, and unity in this city under the umbrella and moral standards of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we keep his heritage alive in our children. Our children are being exposed to things that are not beneficial nor healthy for them nor our community. These are our children. I'm trying to provide a different alternative. One that helped me to become the man that I am today in Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. People united to advance the dream has been gathering and unifying in this city for thirty...
...to clear... After nearly five long months of protesting and two years, they were finally able to view the police body cam as another of a son. Five long months having to hear the police department slander their son's past for repeatedly, while at the same time deny her the opportunity to witness the future herself. Five long months, just to be told that a shamgram jury would no, would not indict the police responsible. And five long months of watching the same police department subsequently take two more lives to make it a total of four for the calendar year. But I don't s- I don't have to see the body cam video to know what transpired. I'm not clamoring or psychic, I just seen the situation play out too many times before. Will they show her the special cut edited version that they showed the grand jury to cast the cops in the best light? Or will they show her the real raw uncut version of how this so-called officer, we'll just call him friendly for now, showed to shirk his duty and his oath, so he could violate Juwan's civil rights and murder him in the process? These officers were called to address over a hundred yards away from Juwan, the police. So we got the whole picture of how these officers intentionally diverted from the homeless man. He was called there for, for trespassing to arrest a, a black man sitting in his car minding his own business over a hundred yards away. And by the way, I'm pretty sure the grand jury didn't hear about the multiple witnesses that told him that Juwan had nothing to do with it, and to please and beg for them to please stop beating him. I even hear some scuttlebutt that the actual culprit was hiding in a ditch watching the whole thing go down. No, they won't do that because that's not the narrative that they want to paint. You see, that's when a cop's under the microscope, the DAs around the country can then we forget how to present a compelling case. And you see, that, that doesn't fit the narrative they want to paint. See, I even read an article for some investigative journalists that said the witness was called just to say the well, Juwan wasn't feeling good today. See, that's the narrative they want to paint. The grand jury probably didn't hear a word about these officer friendlies, numerous previous write-ups for excessive force. No, the grand jury heard about our autopsy report, about it in large heart. And that's something we knew already because to the letter, all his friends and family talk about is how big his heart was. Now he took care of everyone around him, now he gives a shirt off his back to a stranger. Yeah, that big heart of Juwan Dallas was beating fine before Officer Friendly decided to take his eye off the ball from his job and beat him to taze Juwan Dallas to death. Will she see the version of Officer Friendly where the cops say that they ignored their training and escalate to violate people's civil rights? You know, they always say, "We can do this the easy way or the hard way." Now ironically, that's something I only heard from two people in my life, cops and gangsters.
Good morning and happy Thanksgiving, Council President Small, Council, Mayor Stimson, Administration, and my neighbors who call the Port City home. My statement today is clear, I'm sorry, I am Marvin Charles Lou Jr. My statement today is clear, there must be a change in the culture and mentality concerning policing in the city of Mobile. The optics and soundbites over the last several months have painted a picture of unnecessary aggression and tactical movements that have led to deaths of unintended victims and placed families and communities in possible harm, even with the explanations of legality and legitimacy that bring no consolation to a grieving family and city. This is evident by the Administration's swift response to last week's predawn raid that resulted in the death of a sixteen-year-old. Please note, I will not sidestep the issue of deaths by gun violence in our city perpetrated by citizens on citizens. I will not turn a blind eye to the rash of shootings stemming from gun, gang warfare, and domestic altercations. I will not stand here and not acknowledge that we all play a role in bringing peace to our streets and returning power to our communities, and I will not let this moment pass and not applaud law enforcement in, in Mobile for ground, groundbreaking programs such as SCORE, Community Facilitators, and Youth Violence Prevention. However, we who are sworn and vowed to protect and serve, lead in love, preach and teach, train and support, guide and mentor, and do not fulfill them, cha- change must be made. We are held to a higher standard of conduct because of the roles we chose to pursue. We must now see, as the continuing independent investigation is ongoing, the following, if found to be deficient. Number one, change of policies. Number two, change of personnel from top brass to foot patrol. Number three, change of practices. We must now see intentional input from communities we serve before chaos ensues. Realistic tactical actions that combats crime but considers the safety of citizens, and a reversal of approaches that guilt become, guilt comes before innocence and death comes before arrest. We must be together, black and blue and white, not asunder, black against blue and s- black against white and scared of blue.
Um, Madam Clerk, uh, before you go ahead, I would like to, um, make a, uh, comment, and I would like to, um, charge the Public Safety Director, and I'm glad you're in position now. Your hands are, is full, as you can tell. But, um, I'll charge you to come up with a committee of, uh, of concerns, community leaders in our community, and keep them abreast. I know there are some changes that has been made in the police department, um, some training that is going on, but I believe that you should go ahead and try to get a committee together, uh, for committed, community leaders and co- and people that are concerned within the community, and sit them down and keep them abreast, either out of monthly or quarterly, and also to hear their concerns and make sure that those trainings of, and the practices, practices that are being changed are, that the co- that the community are abreast of it. Because even on, thinking of last week, the council approved some stuff, and, uh, the c- community don't even know they have been approved or, you know, um, for some classes and some training. So I do charge you for in the next couple of weeks to get that together and try to keep the community abreast.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've already started that, uh, and Pastor Lou and Mr. Ali are on that committee. We're looking to expand that committee. We've, I've had about seven members now. Uh, we, I've asked various members of the community, um, Mr. Woods, for additional individuals that they would like to see the, see on the committee, and I will say the same to any of the council members, if they have any recommendation, I'd be glad to take them.
So do you have a set number, or had that even been discussed, or how many people out of the community that you are going to add to this committee?
We don't have a set number, I would like to keep it around thirteen to fifteen, just to make it manageable. Uh, right now, we have, I have five permanent commitments.
Because there are several people, many citizens, I would r- rather say, that's out in the community that have concerns. So is it best for them to contact you, uh, directly, or should they contact the council member, and the council member, you know, give you their names, or, I mean, what's the best?
The best thing would be to ca- uh, contact, um, a councilman, have the council member put forth their name. Uh, because although I ha- I know a great deal of people in the community, I don't know them all, and we are looking for the right mix. Uh, we're looking for businessmen as well as a community leader such as, uh, Pastor Lou and Mr. Ali, to be a very effective and, uh, well-rounded group.
Alright, thank you.
James Jackson Jr.
Good morning, everyone. James L. Jackson Jr. Uh, I'm here to advocate for Juwan Dallas. Uh, first off, I want to thank the members of the city council that advocate, actually advocated that Ms. Dallas see the body cam video. She will be able to see it tomorrow, so I want to thank y'all for that. Second of our, uh, second off, uh, I have a concern about those officers that confronted Juwan, uh, still being out on the streets. Uh, first of all, they approached him, uh, and he had nothing to do with the call that was made for them to come out to. That was a problem right there. So by the police chief and the DA saying the policeman had nothing to do with it, they had a lot to do with it, because he wasn't even supposed to be approached in the first place. Um, we also, I feel that we should know who these officers are, and if they had any past, uh, write-ups on them or anything, uh, you know, just someone reported that they have been part of police brutality in the past. Um, it's just a concern that these officers are still on the street, and, uh, and Juwan would not be at the dinner table with his mother because they was confronted by MPD, there's not any idea that he was gonna pass away. He, I, I bet a hundred to one that he'll still be alive, weren't confronted by those policemen that evening. Thank y'all for your time.
Sylvester Tiedem.
Mr. Tiedem. I'm clerk.
Betty Martin.
Ms. Martin. I'm clerk.
Carolina Davis. Yeah, I'm sorry, Davis.
Ms. Dallas. I'm clerk.
Carrie Williams.
Ms. Williams. I'm clerk.
Diana Thompson.
Ms. Thompson. I'm clerk.
James Williams.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is James Williams, my friends call me J. Douglas. And primarily, why I'm here this morning, I was looking through one of the agendas of the council meeting. I ran it off, and it was over a thousand or something, all the supporting documents that go along with the, uh, with the agenda. I couldn't find a table of content, so I've just kind of gone through it, picking up various things, very detailed. And it's quite a bit of information, and I know y'all are on the work pole of time, and I was just kind of amazed as to how you can go through so much information in a short period of time and present it. A table of content would help, you know, if you was looking for something specific that you wanted to, uh, observe or have questions about. But I didn't see that. And, but what I did see as I was going through the agenda, the forms that we complete to speak to the city council, there's a form that you fill out. I have my copy here. In the past, when you would come to speak to the council, you would be required to give your name and your address. And then that was changed to where you just gave your name. I can understand things, uh, are done in a progressive nature, and it's good to have some documentation when people do speak before the council. But what troubled me is that in today's subversive society, I don't feel that personal information regarding your address, your phone number, or your email should be posted on the agenda that's out there. When you pull it up, you can go through the agenda, and you'll find all that information. And there are some people, they don't, they don't have good intentions. They might, might, they might not remember your address and your phone number when they're listening here, but they can pull it up. And as I go about my daily life, I, I hear stuff, I'm pretty sure all of us do. And that's a concern of mine, and I just have a suggestion that when you do make an appeal to speak before the city council, that the address and phone number and, and other personal information, that it be blighted out of the-
Tell, tell Mrs. Byer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for coming.
Timothy Hollis.
Good morning, Timothy Hollis. I stand before you today with a profound call to action, echoing the spirit of the late Michael A. Figures, a relentless advocate for justice and equality. Today, I urge you to join hands and lend your support to a cause, not only one that shapes the trajectory of our community, but has the potential to redefine justice across the state of Alabama. I come to you not merely as a voice, but as a plea for progress, a plea for the amendment of body camera policies that governs our law enforcement agencies statewide. This legislation which we seek to champion is not just about cameras, it's about weaving the fabric of inclusion, transparency, and justice for victims, stakeholders, and attorneys. In the pursuit of justice, we can't afford to operate in the shadows. We must stand in the full glare of transparency, for it is there that accountability thrives, and the seeds of equality are sown. Envision a city that stands as a trailblazer, not just in the state, but in the nation, setting the standard for what justice should look like. This is not an idle dream, it is an achievable reality, and Mobile has the power to be at the forefront of this transformative change. It is an opportunity for Mobile to carve its name in the annals of history as a city that stood tall and demanded accountability, fairness, and inclusivity. Michael A. Figures, in his tireless pursuit of justice, taught us that change begins at home. By petitioning our local state delegation, we are not just shaping our community's future, we are contin- we are contributing to a broader movement towards justice that echoes far beyond our city limits. Let Mobile be the catalyst for change, the spark that ignites a flame of justice that burns brightly across Alabama. Let us be the architects of a future where every citizen, regardless of background or circumstance, can trust in a system that is fair, transparent, and just. In the spirit of Michael A. Figures, let us rise to the occasion. Let us not merely speak of change, but be the change that our community and our state so desperately need together. Let us champion this cause and pave the way for Mobile to be a trailblazer in the relentless pursuit of justice and equality. Several years ago, I witnessed the late, great Levon Manzi and our esteemed mayor petition for tax credits for dilapidated buildings downtown. For certain, the life of a building cannot weigh more than the life of a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Madam City Clerk, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings, Reggie Hill is my name. Um, I rise today to address claims, contracts, public safety, and economic development. Um, normally, I would have more of a prepared, uh, sentiment to share with you, but today with everything that's going on, I think it's just best, uh, to speak directly from some notes, um, just so that some things can officially be on the record. Um, let's begin with the claims, uh, please. Um, what is the process for obtaining information, uh, for citizens? We know that the Freedom of Information Act exists. Uh, nonetheless, we have people right here in this room who have requested information regarding claims, uh, that have been filed before this body, and there have not been responses. That leads to the next, um, question. What is the duration between time that a claim can be sent from the public and then there being official response from our public officials? Uh, let's look at contracts, uh, please. What is the protocol for meetings, uh, with citizens who are negatively impacted by ongoing or expired contracts, uh, that were passed by this body? Uh, we understand that there are some citizens who, uh, again, who have made claims, um, and there have been specific departments to, uh, maybe speak to the individual as a reply, but there has been nothing done concrete to actually alleviate the issue that those citizens are facing. So if there's any protocols on how we go about the con- So if there's any protocols on how we go about the contracts, that needs to be made clear and transparent to the public because we can't really find it within the chapters in the Mobile Movement Code. Um, let's look at public safety and economic development. It was very interesting to see the young people that came down here today and as well to hear the sentiments from Mr. Carroll requesting um them to take a stab at what we see to be a rising uh crisis here within the city of Mobile. But what's furthermore even interesting to me, we already have existing data proven examples of what to do with that. And so I'm calling upon each of these public officials to actually move beyond the hostility that may have prevented us from working together in the past, if we're really about what we're saying we're about doing down here. Because I mean, we're seeing it right here within this building with all seven existing districts within the city. Um, and pretty much everyone that has a stake in this piece down here, they know for sure that this works. And so we have to get beyond what it may be personally if we're gonna actually get something done. Uh, let's look at this economic development piece, please. Uh, sixty-four zero five eight was brought up today. Um, and I believe that it should be up to the people uh to have a have a say so in the state of their communities and how things is on. Um, I brought this up last week, particularly as to how a UDC decision uh basically worked to uproot um a community in a residential area. Unfortunately, no one up here uh had the fortitude to stand like we've possibly seen with this agenda item uh for this matter. So we're gonna have to file um this claim within the appeal, excuse me, within the circuit court today. Uh, I will be providing a copy of that to the clerk's office and the city's legal department. Uh, as well, it'll be available to your email, and I would like for this to be put on the record. But this will be the seed to kick off a lot of what has been corrupt and conspired amongst this body. And I'm praying that you will take it serious because that's gonna determine the quality of life in the city of Mobile. Thank you for your on the floor.
Eugene Gilbert.
Mayor Stevenson, Mr. Small, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to address you. Again, my name is Eugene Gilbert. I am from Atlanta, Georgia. I'm a longtime producer of special events. The event, the event that I'm speaking of is called the Mobile Original Ball of the Bands. Let me go back first. We started in Atlanta in nineteen ninety-four, producing the Ball of the Bands all around the country. If you've seen the movie Drumline, my company was consultant with Dallas Austin, but Twenty Century Fox produced Drumline. Again, we started in ninety-four. Mobile was our second market in nineteen ninety-five, and we've been coming to Mobile off and on. Last time here was twenty sixteen. The Ball of the Bands is a fundraiser. It impacts local communities. We work with community organizations. We work with high schools and HBCU marching bands, and we have generated millions of dollars for these organizations. The challenge I have here is, we've been engaged with um Mr. um Drinker Consulting Company, who is the management company, at least held himself out to be the management company for Lad Stadium. And we've been communicating with him over the last year, only to find out in the last week or so that he had that Lad Stadium does not have a consulting management company and that Mr. Drinker, in fact, was a a si- um employee for the city of Mobile. We were started by this fact because the whole time he's been issuing us contracts, making demands for payments, payments totaling almost forty thousand dollars. As I said before, we produce the Ball of the Bands all around the country, Superdome, Mercedes-Benz Stadium. You name it, we've been there. So how these things occur, expenses, how do you pay for stadiums? How do you pay for staffing? We're very familiar with that, and what he was doing was just so improper, but we tried to bring it to best in class. So the Ball of the Bands is supposed to take place December the third. And um at this point, we don't know what's gonna happen with the Ball of the Bands. We have many community organizations, high schools, and college bands that are looking forward to it. And um due to the fact that we feel we were manipulated by um uh city of Mobile um employee, that we are looking for some level of relief, some level of sponsorship, so that we can bring this great event to Mobile once again. Our date is December the third. Be very aggressive for us to make that happen, but we're willing to um produce the Ball of the Bands December the tenth. I'm just hoping that there's some great level of consideration for my organization. We've generated hundreds of thousands of dollars for Mobile. We have never got a dime, nor have we asked, from the city of Mobile. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to come together so that we can deliver this great event to help these organizations help themselves. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Gilbert, um I know that you've been working with the uh city attorney or talking with the city attorney. Uh, I will ask Mr. Woods if he don't mind responding to see where exactly where we at right now.
So, thank you, Mr. President. So three things, I think we were only aware um that Mr. Gilbert was interacting with uh stadium employees as of last Thursday. I mean, I I know he's been interacting a great deal longer than that. Um, wanna make two things clear. At one, we are trying to deal with this issue between the transition of the school board, the property to the school board. Um, we'll have a conversation with them. The important thing to note is the city has fulfilled all of its contractual obligations at this point. Lad is closed. Uh, there are no longer any employees from the city. I didn't do that. There there are no longer any city employees employed to operate Lad. Um, our last game was the Port City Challenge, and so that was, we're we're still been on the timeline to move to start closing on November twenty-eighth, and then that going forward, probably everything locked down by December fourth, that week of. Um, no payment. So Mr. Mr. Gilbert hadn't made any payment to the city or to the other entity, and there are no signed contracts. So we've we confirmed that, but that doesn't help fix his problem. We'll continue to have the conversations with him to see what we can do dealing with the school board and dealing with the city. But right now, we don't have any contractual obligations, nor do we have any employees over there. But the other issues that Mr. Gilbert just talked about, we're looking into, because I just met him this morning.
Could you keep us abreast on that?
Absolutely.
Um, can I just add one more comment? Thank you very much.
I'll grant the question you do. What's the question?
We did not make payment because because what Mr. Drinker was doing was just, it was just so incompetent. We were trying to find a way to make it happen, but we've invested thousands of dollars in this event, thousands of dollars. And we we just wanna try to bring some resolution as soon as we can. The school system is right here. City of Mobile is right here. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, and I've been here off and on for about four or five weeks now. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that within the next couple of days or so that we can find a way to come together to make this work.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think the city attorney and um I think Chandra all have heard that, you know, looking for some type of palatable compromise uh to see if we cannot help you resolve this. Uh, I think over the next couple of days, uh, Mr. Woods and so, we should have some type of answer.
And that's correct. We are, we we talked, we've made those outreach, I've talked to Ms. Smith, and we'll see what our options are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Rogers regarding ordinance sixty-four zero five eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, David Rogers, uh fifteen Sims Avenue, Mobile, Alabama. Here on behalf today for economic development purposes, uh the industrial park board in particular. Um, as you all recall, last week, we had a zoning application change um that we were trying to change from I-two to B-five um by ways so that we could get the property zoned properly, that we could go through re-subdivision plot um with the current UDC program. So um because of the questions um associated with that last week and misconstrued information with that, we thought it would be best to withdraw the application. Um, our attorney, Patrick Dungen, did talk to Michael Linder, um and that's the process of us going today, which is to make a formal, well, withdrawal of that. We do understand that that carries a a six-month, um I guess moratorium type thing that we can't go back for the UDC. We're okay with that. Uh, this was a separate project uh for us down the down the road for the for the developer of the project. Um, but that was that was our intent, so.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Dave.
Well, thank you for being here, Mr. Rogers. Who is the owner of the property that was subject to this application?
So so the there there's two pieces of property. Uh, one of those pieces was the industrial park board, and one of them was Jerry Lathan for Lathan Companies. Um, the the subsequent new owner, once the sale of the property is final, would have been would have been Jerry Lathan um for future development for for what he's wanting to do out there, which is particularly residential development.
There are two parts. My recollection is there's two parcels, a northern parcel and a southern parcel.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the northern parcel is owned by?
Industrial Park Board.
The industrial park?
Yes, sir. Yep, the the application, uh Councilman Day's was was subject to two parties, was Jerry Lathan and the IPB, so I'm just here on the IPB side.
Mr. Lathan owns the southern?
I believe so, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would you confirm that? I'd like to know who the owners of record of those of that land that we're talking about, the land that was the subject of this application that borders along Rabbit Creek.
If you'll give me just two seconds, I can look that up for you right now. So, yes, sir. The if the the map that should be in front of you guys is for the industrial park board of the northern piece, and then this very southern uh piece is Jerry and Terry Lathan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the questions or comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. President. Um, so, Woods.
Thank you. Uh, just out of curiosity, I think I asked this last week, uh where uh future use or proposed future use would be residential? I mean, why are we still seeking the B-five, I guess? Is that, um, can you add some clarity? Why don't we go to R-one?
Sure, yeah. And and the the original thought, which what we were told by our council was we, because it was split zoning on the parcels, we were not allowed to go through a re-subdivision to redraw the lot lines. So we thought the easier thing to do was just to go back to B-five, like it was originally zoned, redraw the lot lines, and then go through the proper re-subdivision and rezoning at that point. Um, but again, because of the questions raised last week, we just thought it best to take a step back and and we can do it. Um, you know, at another way, if there if we'd rather uh be able to go through R-one, but the developer would have to come back and make that application on his own, because the industrial park board would not be party of that after this application.
I don't understand.
Hold on, Mr. Dave. Woods, okay, Mr. Dave.
I don't understand the part about the developer.
Yes, sir.
If the northern parcel is owned by the industrial park board and the southern parcel is owned by Mr. Lathan, why is the developer involved?
So the developer is Mr. Lathan. He's a developer.
About that developer.
Yes, sir, when I say developer. So 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 all this property is subject right now to a larger land transaction sale uh with an out-of-town development group called Scannell. Um, when Scannell, uh the way their their agreement would work, this property that that we're talking about for the zoning, they don't want, because it is wetland property, and it doesn't revolve for them around a warehousing development. So to carve that off, their deal is that they will, they will, they have a separate land transaction deal with Jerry Lathan, as he will acquire that and then develop that himself.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Carroll. Uh, does that have to be a separate development in the southern parcel? Can it just simply be rezoned R-one i- in this current process and then re-advertised for thirty days? I guess that's a shallow question.
That's really a a legal question, but the procedure outlining the submission process basically says that any application that is withdrawn is subject to the six-month delay. And it even speaks to um current or similar application. So that's how the procedure is defined.
Thank you. So in essence, a withdrawal is the same as a denial, and it starts the process all over?
Correct.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Reynolds.
I was gonna save my comments until this item came up, but I'll go ahead and make them now. I don't think it was ever the intent of this applicant to make this R-one. There's been nothing in the record to support that other than some comments or suggestions. They say they want to build houses on the parcel. They say they want to build a warehouse. This is all based on the the record. They say they want to, they want to use the property as avoidance for the wetlands, according to the Army Corps of Engineer application. They say they want to place the property in a conservation easement. Nobody, I mean, nobody knows what they want to do. I think now that it's come to light that uh all these other things that they've suggested they want to do with it were used in sort of double dealing, now they want to withdraw their application. Um, I guess that's not surprising uh to me. I think I think this really does tie to a bigger, broader development. It's really aimed at the trying to get some incentive for this project. And frankly, you know, with all the double dealing that's been going on and just, you know, not being forthright and upfront, you know, is this something we really want to partner with, you know, this sort of group? I mean, it just, this just seems like an effort, because what we're at, I'm asking for, and the residents of District Four are asking for, are really fairly innocuous things, things that, you know, protect our environment, protect our community, so on and so forth. But this seems like an effort to sidestep, you know, reasonable environmental protections for the future of our city. Um, and just to illustrate a couple of those things, Ashley, can you pull up the uh map, please? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Ashley's gonna pull up a map that was provided to me by the gentleman at the podium. Uh, I don't, and this was in his uh apparent role as the Vice President of Economic Development for the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, today, he's down here representing the industrial parks board. But this this map was provided to me as part of this larger discussion of incentive as late as October twentieth of twenty twenty-three uh on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Y'all can see parcel on the right-hand side, all the way up is this parcel we're talking about, which shows a blue shaded area that is a proposed ninety-six acre conservation easement. And there seems to be agreement among the parties to do this, but now, for whatever reason, they don't want to do it. They want to get bullheaded and just move straightforward and just say, you know, these environmental protections that are reasonable, they're no concern to us. What we want is to make money. We want to make money on behalf of the taxpayers and the citizens of this city that live in this area. Now, what you're looking at is Rabbit Creek, which is one of the very few remaining pristine wetlands left in the Dog River watershed. And this out-of-town developer from Indianapolis, big billion-dollar company is coming down here, saying they're gonna produce thousands of jobs, which I don't believe, and they're gonna invest over five hundred million dollars into this site. Five hundred million dollars is what they say. Yet we're, they're squabbling about potentially five million dollars, two and a half million from the city, two and a half from the county. That's one percent, one percent of the project, which I, what I think is gonna happen, if you take the Corps of Engineers' application, they've got four phases, of which they only submitted the Corps of Engineer permit for phase one. Yet they're claiming thousands of jobs, yet they only submitted their application for a very small portion of this overall project. What I think they want to do is have the citizens of Mobile come in and put in this infrastructure and take a chance on them. That's what I think. But frankly, the citizens of District Four, and I don't think the citizens of this city ought to be taking chances on people who are misleading us, the taxpayer, at every single turn, including their pending Corps of Engineers' application, of which they say that they're going to use this parcel that we're discussing here today to help alleviate, let me use the exact words. The applicant has submitted project plans to city of Mobile that contradict their claims of avoidance and minimization in the Army Corps of Engineer application, as depicted in these attachments I have. You can't see them. The submitted plans reveal future development phases that would significantly impact the wetlands current currently claimed as avoidance. So, Mr. President, uh I I would be advocating to just keep this open, to push this along when the item comes up till December nineteenth. That, I don't know if we have support for it, but I'll make that motion. But I I think it's very important that the public understands that we ought to be very skeptical, no matter how big the economic incentive or economic development gains that are going to be portrayed. It's very important the taxpayer know that this is a competitive environment. The taxpayer money that we put out for economic development is very competitive, and there is a project less than five miles from this one that will produce as much, if not more. that will produce as much, if not more, than this project will, and it has no environmental impact whatsoever. So if we're gonna pick winners and losers, in my opinion, it ain't this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, uh, I just, again, I'm, I'm just here to talk about the zoning application. Um, to, to pull up this entire project today was not the intent, so.
Yeah. Any other qu- questions coming in from the council?
Let's vote it up, down on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dave.
Thank you.
My clerk.
Ordinance is held over. Forty-six zero five-five, amend chapter forty-six, Police Department and Law Enforcement of the Mobile City Code.
Move delay over till December twelfth.
Second.
And property moved in second in the discussion. Uh, there is a, uh, or was a committee meeting scheduled, uh, for this, uh, afternoon, uh, dealing with this. We're gonna postpone it until next Tuesday at one o'clock, um, PM, uh, because of, uh, other important matters of, uh, topic that need to be discussed that are gonna last longer than, uh, normal. In other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I'd lay it over.
Sixty-four zero five-six, consider modification of a previously approved plan and approval for property located at sixty-five North Mobile Street.
So moved.
Second.
And property moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Sixty-four zero five-seven, consider a modification of a previously approved plan unit development for property located at sixty-five North Mobile Street.
So moved.
Second.
And property moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Sixty-four zero five-eight, rezoned property located at sixty-one thirty-seven Todd Acres Drive from B five and I two to B five.
So do it hold over till December nineteenth?
Second.
And property move in second to lay over to December nineteenth, uh, in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. It may seem odd that I'm trying to hold this, this item over, but I, that conservation easement that I outlined on that map, you know, we really have to have a lot of record to, uh, create a conservation easement. Um, I'd like to keep it on the agenda, keep it in the public's eye, especially as the Corps of Engineers is considering their, um, you know, wetland permit on this site, so that's why I'm moving to hold it over.
In other discussion.
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Gregory.
Just a legal question on this. Who has the legal ability and authority to withdraw an application? On something like this?
In general, uh, in general, Madam Vice President, I would say only the applicant can withdraw an application.
Um, Mr. President.
Are you done, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah. So, if the applicant is withdrawing the application, then does that mean that is what has to happen? If the applicant wants to withdraw the application?
As we stated earlier, I don't believe an applicant or outside party has control over the council's agenda, but once the application has been withdrawn, I'm not sure there's any legal outcome that's anything other than a functional denial, as I believe was said over there a minute ago.
Yeah, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Again, the, the intent of this is to, um, no applicant has the ability to change our agenda. We affect our agenda, it's our agenda. The idea is to keep this on the agenda so it stays in the forefront of everybody's mind. And keep in mind, last week, we learned from our attorney and many others that the ultimate decider in this city on zoning is not an applicant, it's not anyone else. The city council, the legislative arm of this city, has one hundred percent complete control over zoning. So let's just say, as these discussions and progress, there, an opportunity or there's agreement to place this property into a conservation easement. Instead of waiting six months to do that, it would only take thirty days. So I, I think it's wise, you know, as these discussions unfold, to keep this item alive. So that's, that's where I'm coming from with this.
And other discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Yeah. Um, this will be a question, I guess, for, uh, Shella's department. Um, Shella, if the applicant withdraws the application that's on the agenda, uh, holding it in the future has no bearing anyway, because it, that's not the application that's coming back to us from the applicant. Is that not true? If they withdraw their, if they're withdrawn their current application, it no longer has any bearing to this council because they're coming back with something different?
Well, stated this way, uh, if the applicant proceeds with a new application, it would go before the normal process. Um, and if it, if it was involved in rezoning, that would be the planning commission and then to the city council.
Y- yes, ma'am, I understand that, but I'm talking about their current application. If they withdraw it, then what's the point having it on the agenda because it no longer has any bearing? Is that not correct?
So, the short answer is yes, because of what Mr. Lender just stated. If there's withdrawal, and you all vote, the only thing you can do is vote it down because you don't have a pending application in front of you. And I think, Mr. Reynolds is correct. You, you're the arbiters of your agenda, but you can't vote on something that's not there in the affirmative, be- because what you're going to run into, you can't vote yes, you can't vote in the affirmative because you don't want to run into, you can approve something, and then they can very well submit, um, in, in the near future. And so, Mr. Lender is correct in stating that your, your vote has to be in the negative. And I think you're right, Mr. Carroll, by asking, what are you voting on? That's why, that's why he said that.
Because it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist after withdrawal. I'm found, Mr. President, let's, let's.
The council could make its own motion to do the zoning. It's, that's under the UDC. The council on, on its own motion can do a piece of zoning, although it would have to be re-advertized. So again, you could accomplish the thrust of this application, but you would have to make, uh, you would have to originate on a motion from the council, go through proper publication and all of, all of that before it could be done. But with an application no longer in front of the council, there's nothing really for you to act on, even though it's still on the agenda.
That's correct.
All right. All in favor on Mr. Reynolds', uh, motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Right, okay. Mr. Reynolds' motion, uh, fails, uh, going back to the original, end of discussion.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, you did, okay.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And property move in second in the discussion. All in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
I don't fail.
Clerk.
Resolution is held over. Zero-eight twelve forty-seven, approved purchase order to Interface Services, Inc. for new flooring on the fourth floor of Government Plaza. Twenty-one twelve forty-eight, authorized contract with Marin Architecture for design of Boathouse Pavilion and Visitor Center at Langen Park. Twenty-one twelve forty-nine, authorized contract with three twenty-one Z insights for deployment and management of technical technology consulting services. Twenty-one twelve fifty, authorized contract with Planting Healing for Personnel Staffing Services for the YES Intern Program. Twenty-one twelve fifty-one, authorized contract with American Marine Technical Solutions for construction of Fireboat Dock and Boat Lift. Twenty-five twelve fifty-two, granting easement for transitioning overhead power lines for restroom facilities and Pavilion at Langen Park. Thirty-one twelve fifty-three, authorized mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the Mobile Metropolitan Planning Organization.
So moved.
Second.
And property move in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Vice President.
Um, a couple of them, twenty-one dash twelve forty-eight, which is a, a contract for design of the Boathouse Pavilion and Visitor Center at Langen Park. This is a very early beginning design for these three facilities at Langen Park. Uh, we are starting early because we really can't build on this area until the dredging is completed, but we wanted to get a head start, so that's why this design contract is before us today. Also, on the, um, twenty-five dash twelve fifty-two, which is, uh, the overhead power lines for restroom facilities and the Pavilion at Langen Park. You probably know that we have been working on the amphitheater at Langen Park, as well as, uh, building new restrooms. And this is just one more step toward getting all of that work complete, and look forward to being able to host different events at the Pavilion out there very soon. That's all.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, I'm sorry, I missed, uh, an item to go in this motion. Uh, sixty twelve fifty-four, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims. Should be included with those resolutions.
In other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-three twelve fifty-five through zero-three twelve seventy-seven.
To waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions is read.
Second.
And property move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Zero-three twelve five-five, appoint Carlos Chambers to the Mobile Library Board. Thirty-seven twelve fifty-six and twelve fifty-seven, are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premise is only license to Fastway on Moffett Road, and for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premise is only license to Chevron Mont Lamar on Mont Lamar Drive. Forty twelve fifty-eight, twelve fifty-nine, twelve sixty, are declaring the structures at four seventy-five East Ridge Road, two oh-six Norman Street, six sixty St. Anthony Street Public Nuisances, and ordering them demolished, repaired, secured. Sixty twelve sixty-one, twelve sixty-two, twelve sixty-three, twelve sixty-four, and twelve sixty-five are proving award of, uh, special bonus to Public Services Employee of the Month, Officer of the Month, Firefighter of the Month, and Firefighter of the Month. Sixty twelve sixty-six, twelve sixty-seven, twelve sixty-eight, twelve sixty-nine, and twelve seventy are determining appropriations to Ariel Holloway Elementary School, Delta Resource Educational Association Mobile, Inc., World's Ambition, Halls First, Inc., Marshville Property Owners Association serve a public purpose and approving payment. Zero-three twelve seven-seven, appoint John Williams to the Mobile Sports Authority.
So moved.
Second.
And property move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
CFP resolution is being introduced, twenty-one twelve seventy-one through twenty-one twelve seventy-two.
Per council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, thirty, twenty-one twelve seventy-three through twenty-one twelve seventy-four.
By council rules, these will also lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one twelve seventy-five, call for public hearing to rezon property located at forty-three oh-five and forty-three fifteen Halls Mill Road from B three and I one to I one, scheduled December nineteenth. Forty-one twelve seventy-six, call for public hearing to rezon property located at forty-three fifty-four and forty-three sixty-four Halls Mill Road from R one and B three to I one, scheduled December nineteenth.
So moved.
And property move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Davis. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. May I take this time to wish everyone in District Two, uh, Happy Thanksgiving? Uh, this is the most precious time of the year for me, from Thanksgiving until Mardi Gras. We live in the absolute best city in the state of Alabama, and it's my pleasure to be among those who are public servants to the people here. Uh, may I wish you all the blessings that come with Thanksgiving this season, and everyone be safe out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Carroll.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, I do want to wish everyone, uh, Happy Thanksgiving, uh, and also want to, uh, just remind everybody, especially in District Six and, uh, and those, uh, new residents of District Six, that, um, if you, uh, if you have a, a meeting or community meeting in your neighborhood, I'd love to attend, so, uh, please reach out to me, uh, don't hesitate, and I'll, I'll be there. Thanks.
Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to skip right over Thanksgiving for now and go to Christmas. I have my annual Christmas meeting coming up on December fourth. It will be at the Mobile Museum of Art. As we always do, we will be bringing gifts for the residents of Wilmer Hall. Um, the postcard that goes out in the mail, there will be a list of all, all the items that are needed. So please take a look at that and do some shopping early, and bring those gifts to the meeting where they will be collected and taken over to Wilmer Hall. This is also a meeting where we recognize our, um, HOAs and CAG members and the presidents. Uh, we will have some resolutions for them, as well as some, uh, goodies for everyone, as well as some great food and entertainment, as we always do. It's a great time for fellowship and to meet some of the folks in the administration who protect and serve all of us every day. Going back to Thanksgiving, I want to join my colleagues in the administration in wishing everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. I know a lot of people are on the road, and some of the weather is a little, uh, dicey out there, so please be careful. But, um, I too am very grateful to be here, uh, all the blessings that we have. I am thankful for my health, for my family, and certainly for the honor of serving everyone in District Seven and the City of Mobile. So, uh, again, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and God bless.
And greetings to the citizens of District Three. Uh, this is, um, going to be kicking off our holiday season on next Tuesday. I will announce, uh, several events that's going on in District Three, uh, for the holiday season, and wishing all the district and all the, uh, citizens of Mobile a Happy Thanksgiving, and I'm very thankful to serve as your council member, and I'm thankful for my colleagues along the council and along with the administration, and the city clerk and her staff. Okay. Anything from the administration?
Just gonna go to make the declaration at your leisure, Mr. President. Okay. At this time on the state, my name is Ricardo Woods. I am the city attorney, and I'm licensed to practice along the city of Alabama. Um, at this time, I'm gonna ask the council to take a roll call vote and go into executive session to discuss preliminary negotiations involving the matter of trade and commerce, in which this governmental body will be judging or listening to the competitive, competitive nature of negotiations with a private entity, and that we will not reconvene after that meeting concludes.
Second.
Property move in second in the discussion. Roll call.
President Small?
Yes.
Vice President Gregory. Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
And we will not re-.